Good evening. We'll call the order, the November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Shakopee City Council. Mayor Lehman is not available tonight, so I'll be presiding. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Lara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiting.
Here. Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any changes to the agenda from staff?
Nothing, sir.
All right. Were you looking for a motion for the agenda? Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Contreras, second by Delaney. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Next, we're on to item number four, the consent business. Any changes from staff?
No, sir.
I would like to pull one item, four D one, please. We'll pull four D one. Is there any other changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
I'll second that.
Motion by Laris, second by Contreras. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on. This is the...
Read it.
Mayor.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, we have to read the agenda. Let's do that. Read it first. We moved ahead a little fast.
That's okay. We'll kind of fill it in, Mr. Vice Mayor. Here are the admini... or excuse me. Here are the consent business items for November twenty first of two thousand and twenty-three. Four A one is the city council minutes. Four A two is the closing of the pooled TIF fund. Four A three is the closing of the local projects fund and the buildings internal service fund. Four A four is the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Shade Tree Program Grant Award. Four A five is the award of a bid on fire station LED lighting conversion. Four B one accepts a petition and orders the preparation of a feasibility study for the fourteen... or excuse me, the Seventeenth Avenue Extension. Four B two is the South Bridge Lift Station Rehabilitation Project, accepting of the bids and awarding of the contract. Four B three is a contract amendment with WSB for the TH one sixty-nine pedestrian bridge. Four C one is the purchase of portable radios for the fire department. Four E one is the award of a bid for Memorial Park Buildings demolition and other clearing and grading work. And four E two is the termination of a lease agreement with Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau for Memorial Park.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Now that we've moved in second and read the consent agenda into the agenda, now we can vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we've moved our consent agenda. We're going to move on to item number five, recognition of involved residents by the city council. This is your opportunity to address the city council on an item that's not on the agenda. Welcome. Please join us. State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Jody Brennan. I am the Scott County Commissioner for District Three. I haven't been here officially, and I don't know if I'm not on.
Just pull it a little closer if you...
Okay. I don't know if I... I haven't been here officially, so I thought I'd stop in and say hello and see if you have any questions for me. I also just want to let you know that the Scott County Budget Meeting will be held on December seventh at six o'clock. That's the public hearing. That's on a Thursday, so I thought I'd let you know and the constituents in Shakopee know that it's a different day. They know we normally have our meetings and in a different time. So if you want to go to the public hearing, please join us on Thursdays, December seventh at six o'clock. So see if you have any questions for me about Scott County and see if I can answer them or...
Any questions for our county commissioner?
No questions. Thank you for visiting.
Thank you for the update. We appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
And former city council person.
Yeah, former member, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome back. That's right. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council tonight on the item that's not on the agenda? This is your chance to address the council on an item not on the agenda. Last chance to address the council. All right, we will move on for any... to item six for business removed from the consent agenda. Item four D one, Mr. Tobin.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. I am excited tonight. I want to invite Dan Pfaffler from USA Softball Up. He has a fantastic presentation that was candidly a surprise to me, and so it's been pretty exciting. There's other people here that it wasn't as much of a surprise, but when I found out, I wanted to make sure that we got this forward, and he was available. If you know softball, it's hard to get Dan in the room, so the fact that he could be here tonight is quite a treat. Thanks for being here, Dan.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks. I don't know if this is going to be that stimulating of a presentation, but I appreciate the kind words. Thank you, council members, for having me. So we have two awards that the city has earned, and I'll just work down the line here. First of all, we hosted the thirty-third annual Super Men Slow Pitch for USA Softball, and it's the most important slow pitch tournament that my organization runs. And the feedback from the players and the teams and the people that were there was, how do we get this tournament back here year after year after year because of the things that not only occur at the park, it's a wonderful park, Toppa, but the things that go on around in town, the things to do, the places to stay are fantastic. So, you know, I'd like to thank the city for allowing us to run it there, the Shakopee Lions for helping us run it, physically run it, and Tim at the C V B was fantastic. And a special shout out to Sherri from the city. She was great and met with us a couple of times to make sure that everything was taken care of. The second award is the USA Softball Complex of the Year presented by Stabilizer Solutions. So annually, our association, our National Association, USA Softball, gives out an award to one facility throughout the country. Last year, it was given to Fargo for their brand-new twenty-two field mega complex on the north side of town, but this year, we had a couple of staff members at this tournament, and they suggested that Shakopee apply for this. So Sherri was kind enough to respond to me on a bunch of questions on a Wednesday when she was out of town at an MRPA conference, and we got it in in time, barely, and we got notification at our national council meeting that the city had earned this award. So along with that comes some product from Stabilizer Solutions, and we'll be in touch with the city about how that works.
So how many tournaments does your organization hold throughout the country?
Well, I, you know, too many to count, but I would say that locally, we probably run, in Minnesota, probably around three hundred tournaments a year.
So our facility was the best out of all those tournaments that you held. That's great news. So...
Right.
Any questions or comments?
No questions. It's great.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd just like to say, you know, a lot of the work that goes into that complex is done by our Public Works Department. They do an exceptional job, not only with that complex, but with other complexes throughout the city. We're extremely proud of the work they do, and, you know, this award certainly is ninety-nine percent on the back of what they do day in and day out, and I think we need to recognize that.
Yep.
No, definitely, and I got to take part as a fellow member of the Lions Club to be out there for the tournament, and it was busy. It was things going on, teams winning, losing, moving on, enjoying some beverages and food, and we love our park out there, and we're glad that you do, too. So, great. Can we do a quick photo?
Absolutely.
Let's do that.
Also want to invite Keith Rains and the Lions and Tim Dunker up, because this wouldn't have happened without them to be part of this picture.
Yeah, is that the middle? Hold them. Councilmembers around. Lions Club members, and porkers, staff members. This is the fun stuff. Let's have Tim and Dave. Awesome. Congratulations.
I want to thank staff and all the organizations that put their time in to make that a successful
event and garner us some great awards, so thanks again. All right, we're moving on to... is there any other comments on that? Or we'll move on to item number seven.
I voted on that item.
Oh, do we? We want on that one? Yeah, let's... we need to make a motion on item four D one, please. What's the wishes?
Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept where we... the USA Softball Complex of the Year Award.
Second. Motion by Contreras, second by Delaney to accept the award. Any other comments? Discussion? Discussion? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, now, we can move on to item seven.
Lieutenant, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
A motion and a second by Councilmember Delaney to open a public hearing. Any discussion? 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 All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion... Public hearing is now open. Let's move on to item seven A, approval of a currency exchange license for Exile Pawn.
Vice Mayor and council members, this is our yearly public hearing for our currency license. This is required by state law that we hold a public hearing. Exile Pawn has always had a currency license, and they usually, they have to apply through the state. So the state has already received all the information that they need, the insurance and et cetera, and now we need to hold a public hearing, and this gives an opportunity for anybody in the community to speak whether or not there's an issue. The police department has said everything is fine. They don't have any issue with approving this license, and so we just have put a notice out and have not received any emails or any complaints, and so we need to just see if there's anybody here tonight to speak against Exile Pawn.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a public hearing. This is your chance to speak out. If you have any concerns about a license, money, currency exchange license for Exile Pawn, anybody in the audience like to comment? Anybody like to comment on this item before the council tonight? Last chance, time to comment on this public hearing. All right, having said that three times, Councilmember Lara.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilmember Contreras to close the public hearing. Any discussion? 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 All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we're on to approving the resolution. Madam Contreras.
Vice Mayor, I will make a motion to approve Resolution R two thousand and twenty-three dash one three five, approving the application of Exile Pawn, Inc., DBA Exile Pawn and Jewelry located at four fifty West First Avenue for a currency exchange license.
A motion.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Lara. Any discussion? 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 All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. All right, we did not... we were thinking about putting the monthly financial report, item eight A one, on consent, but we didn't, so we will move on. Mr. Reinhart.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm just going to keep this incredibly short. So not much changes since the last monthly report that we had. Still tracking ahead overall, primarily revenues are what's kind of driving that factor, but within each individual department, I think we reasonably expect that we'll be within budget or close to it as well. Going forward, I think you'll see a lot of activity in December and January, as we typically have a lot of transactions in those months. As crazy as it sounds, next Friday, we'll receive our second half property tax settlement. December first is already next Friday, and we kind of hope to bring back preliminary, you know, at least a preliminary estimate of year end, probably first week of February, once we get some of the transactions posted back in January. And then we have our audit scheduled for the middle of April, so, you know, final results for the year will probably be at the end of April. But here to answer any questions you might have or anything you want to discuss.
Any questions of staff?
None.
I'd like...
Go ahead.
I thought the revenues for the Sand Venture are up from the previous year and also the community center. I think that's a really outstanding job for...
News, yes.
Good news.
Very popular sites. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Reinhart. Don't we have any business on that? So item nine A one is the city bill list for your perusal. Any questions on the bill list? All right, we'll go to liaison reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Lara.
Okay. City council or school board meeting last night. The big thing to talk about is the school board won, or the school district won an award and acknowledgement. It's the National Banner Unified Champion School and ESPN Honor Roll, and it is... this is a very big deal because only one of five schools in the state have earned this distinction, and we are the only school in the state of Minnesota to make the top ten list for ESPN Honor Roll. So shout out to Shakopee School District on their awards and great things come out.
Cool. Member Contreras.
Thank you. So I don't have any liaisons for tonight, but I did attend today the... we received the grant money that we were awarded from Angie Craig. I don't know exactly who awarded it. I can't remember, but she came in and gave it to us, and this is for our police department, and it's for our, you know, for mental health, the program that it's from the neck up.
Check up from the neck.
Check up from the neck up, correct. So I was here for that, and that's it, pretty much.
Councilmember Delaney.
Sure. Did a couple of things last week. Attended the School Sisters of Notre Dame Celebrate Connect. It was over at Benedictine. Some from the fire department were there. They relocated from Mankato, so it was really, really good experience. They are having a craft event December second from ten to one. They're satisfied. We'll just invite the other members.
Where is that?
Over at Benedictine.
Okay.
One sixty-nine Coalition. We had two meetings. One was in Plymouth. It was office elections. We talked about path for new priorities, budget approval, and how to get more participation from people or from organizations north of four ninety-four. Also, legislative update was Thursday. That was at the Holiday Inn. House Representative Tabkey was there and also Senator Pratt. They gave us the update on what happened in the legislature over the... this year anyways. Then there was the Metro City meeting Thursday to adopt the policy. The takeaway from that meeting was they had some members from the Office of Cannabis Management and some numbers that kind of stick out in my mind while I was sitting or listening to that. It was hour long. We're not expected to at least have cannabis sales until the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five. That's expected outside of tribal nations. They're trying to fill one hundred and fifty positions to staff agency, and I heard this, but I didn't follow it that much. I was going to do some more research and look back into it. There will be sixteen license types. I didn't really fully understand that, but that's... I'll have to dig back into that. And Spock Electrical Workshop yesterday, and that's it.
It sounds like a lot. Good work. I also attended the presentation of, it was like eighty-one thousand dollars.
Eighty-one thousand.
Yeah. So, Mr. Reynolds, you want to fill us in on that? That's all I had for a liaison report, but I love those big checks, and that's a great opportunity.
Yeah, it was great. You know, Angie Craig has been a wonderful supporter for the city as a whole, and she's done it through construction projects. She's been a champion on the riverfront. She's a champion for the hub, and she came today to... in a whole different area in regards to making sure that our police officers are taking care of their mental health. An incredibly important thing that sometimes gets overlooked, and so we were very happy to have the opportunity to listen to her today and to accept, frankly, the eighty-one thousand dollar check that's going to go to help our police officers as part of their mental health checkups. Definitely well appreciated.
Absolutely, and we receive that through our grant writer. Again, again, our grant writing program, our personnel.
And I will state again that about eight years ago, Chief Tate came to me and said, we really need a grant writer, and I said, I'm not going to do that. I don't think it's of value. I'm proud to say that I've never been more wrong on any issue, I think, both the previous grant writer, but certainly Andrea in her current capacity has just been phenomenal. And, you know, this really spoke to her. She lost a close family member to suicide, and so when she saw this grant come up, she was all in, and, you know, I didn't think we had a chance. I don't think anybody thought we had a chance of getting this grant. And Andrea, to her efforts, was just absolutely astoundingly amazing, and she is an asset to the city. And yes, a full-time grant writer is definitely worth the money. I put out the numbers before of what we pay and what we get, and it's not even close. So, once again, I was wrong.
One thing I will say about Congresswoman Craig being here today, she had the opportunity, and I saw that she understood that our police force is different than other police forces.
Yes.
And our police force is kind of a model, and I'd love to bottle it and sell it. I'm not sure we're ready for that, but she recognizes it, and we had some opportunities to talk about some of our victim services with her, and our person, Barb, got a chance to talk to her, and that's great with some of her background, sorry, and...
And that goes to a decision that this council made probably nine, ten years ago, when they decided to have most cities, you know, let's face it, this city is a leader when it comes to policing, and it always has been. And this was a decision that the council made a decade ago to have an embedded person to come in and actually talk about victim services and be that liaison. I think at the time, there may have been one other city in the state that actually had a full-time position. This council took that on. They made it a part of the department, and she is invaluable to the work that we currently do. She's just phenomenal, and, you know, without that kind of willingness by council to be a part of that innovation, you know, that police department wouldn't be the stellar organization that a congresswoman recognizes that it is today. So thank council for that in the past, and, you know, frankly, that's why a lot of police officers in this day and age want to be here.
Right.
We have a lot of transfers from other organizations, and part of that is, is that they know that they come here, they have a council that is willing to support them and understands the importance of policing, and it shows. You know, we had our last... last year was our lowest crime rate in our history. I mean, that's just phenomenal, and that's, you know, frankly, has a lot to do with this council and its willing, its willingness to do things differently. I'll stop after this. There's another thing we do. We pay our officers to be employed in community service. We pay them to be educated. We pay them with language skills, and we pay them to be healthy. I don't know if there's any other community that I... there's not that I'm aware of in the state that does that. We do that because we want them to be embedded in the community. We want them to... we want our residents to know who they are, and we want them to be safe and healthy, and we also want them to be educated. So that's because of you and the willingness that this council puts to invest in that police department, and that is why it is by far the best police organization I have ever worked with, bar none.
I agree, and that community policing model is what other people are striving for now, and we have it.
And we've had it for decades.
Yeah. So thanks again for that, and any other business? Any other liaison administrative reports, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Any other business before the council tonight?
I have a couple of items that I would like to address. The first item I'd like to address is that council was notified of a resignation submission by our Parks and Recreation Director, Jay Torbin. He has notified us that he's leaving to go to the city of Corcoran to be the city administrator. I just wanted to acknowledge his five years of service to the city of Shakopee, driving a award-winning Parks and Recreation Department, and I just want to thank you for your contribution to the city. You had a job to direct a ship going the wrong direction, and it is now positively in the right direction, and I will say the next person to come on board has a lot... a big shoes to fill. So, thank you, Jay.
Councilmember Lara, thank you for that. Councilmember Contreras, you want to add on?
Thank you for all your great work, and we wish you the best at your next place.
Mr. Reinhart, I'd like to thank you for all the great work you've done with the rec... I mean, even the... talk about the budget tonight, how we saw the increase at Sand Venture, saw the increased revenue from the... it's all due to your work when you came into the city. I'd like to thank you. You're ever going to become a city administrator? I think about that. I know it's something you want to do, but...
Dark side. Well, and I'll echo what the council has said. You came in, you grew. You grew the position. You grew our community Parks Department, and I just think you'll do great for any community, so good luck.
All right, I did have one other...
Any other business?
Yes, I do. So with... I would like to see if there's support to discuss on the next or on a future agenda about our interview process on department heads. As I know, we'll have two department heads to be filling. I believe it is my understanding that it used to rotate amongst us and it doesn't any longer. I don't know if Mr. Reynolds wants to elaborate on that, to make... if I'm correct or not.
Yeah, from a historical perspective, what we used to do was to have a rotating basis for department heads where a single department, or excuse me, a single council member, which would rotate, would be a part of that process. And my understanding now is where it's And my understanding now is, is where it stands, is that the mayor and Councilman Delaney are the individuals that are part of that process.
I will add that he, the mayor, and maybe we should get his perspective. He added me back into that fold this last time for the fire department. And I think he, we'll let him explain it, but he may have been backing off. But we did rotate that, and I would be, I would be in support of looking at rotating that again for department heads. So if there's, we can go down the line here and talk about to bring it back to council to vote on formally. This is just to have staff bring it back. So you want to, Mr. Delaney, Councilmember Delaney, you want to echo your thoughts on that, since you're a member?
Yeah, that's how we have done it before, but also I'd like to get the mayor's feedback because he did, you know, that was one of the things that we started out with initially. But I don't see reason for not bringing that back to council for discussion.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you. I am in favor, too, of bringing him back. I thought we were still on the rotating, but if not, we could just talk about it and clarify it, just to...
We don't want to have to rotate this too often. You know what I'm saying? So, but yes, I agree, and I support it. So we'll, staff, I think, we don't want, we don't want to bring this up.
No, no.
Very few and far between. Mr. Reynolds, you have everything you need to...
Yes, sir. We'll bring it back in the next month.
Any other business?
Nope.
Any other business? We'll move on to item 11.
Make a motion we adjourn till Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Motion by Delaney, second by Lara, to adjourn. Any other discussion, discussion, discussion? We stand adjourned December 5th.